What happened?
He just Larry just started.
Oh, because I waved that.
And because you waved.
Oh crap. No. Not ready yet. Sorry about that.
Hold on one second.
Hold on.
Recording in progress.
Zach.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much for your patience. Had a few computer problems here, so sorry about that. I'm going to bring the Select Board meeting for January 24th to order. We have with us tonight our other two Select Board members. Aaron Underhill and Craig Schultz. And we have a number of items on the agenda tonight, which you'll excuse me for a moment while I try to bring that up. And I've got the packet here. There we go. So. I guess we have a couple of things on the announcements this evening. The first announcement is called A Novel Occasion. It's a virtual event hosted by the Friends of the Milis Library. It's the Second Annual Fundraiser. It's slated for Saturday, January 29th. And it's going to give you an opportunity to meet with authors and join with two authors. The cost for doing this is $50 per person and you get a box of goodies for doing it as well as an opportunity to talk with the authors. There's still time to sign up, so we encourage you to do so. I understand last year it was quite a good session, so please come and join everyone at that session. Give me a moment here, I'm still trying to get something working, so. And there we go. The next is the open positions for the May Town election. We have about three, six, seven positions available for a moderator, Select Board member, School Committee member, Board of Health member, Library trustee, Planning Board member, and Housing Authority member. We have one position in each of those. Nomination papers can be obtained at the Clerk's office. So I encourage anyone who has any interest to please go and sign up and become a part of the town in the positions that are available. I can assure you, it's a lot of fun, so. What we have with us tonight, a great opportunity to recognize some people, but the first one we are going to recognize is our Animal Control Officer, or I should say our former Animal Control Officer Brenda Hamlin, who has served us very, very well over the last many years. And so I am going to ask our Clerk, Mr. Schultz, to read a.
Proclamation.
Proclamation that we have written. I'm sorry, I was trying to find it here. To read the proclamation that we put together to thank Brenda for everything she has done for this town. So Craig, please.
First off, I'm going to say Brenda, thank you. And secondly, the cursive kind of script is harder for me to read. I'll work through it. Let's apologize if there's some stuttering around. Brenda Hamlin, the Milis Select Board deems a great privilege and honor to recognize and thank Brenda Hamlin for outstanding service in the role of Regional Animal Control Officer for the towns of Milis and Medway. During her 25 years of faithful service from January 97 to January 2022, Brenda distinguished herself as dedicated public servant in the role of Regional Animal Control Office. Officer. We, in recognition thereof, we, the members of the Select Board, do hereby join the citizens of the town of Milis to extend our sincere appreciation for Brenda's significant contribution to the welfare and safety of the citizens and animals of the towns of Milis and Medway. And do hereby proudly declare Tuesday, February 1st, 2022, as Brenda Hamlin Day, which is not a town holiday, just to be clear. The town of Milis given this 24th day of January 2022, Milis Select Board, and it's signed by the three of us.
Brenda, I can't tell you enough what a pleasure it has been to work with you over the few years I've been involved. And I know the amount of work you've done for this town has been absolutely outstanding. Some of the issues you've had to deal with, you've done a more than commendable job, an exemplary job. You're going to be tough boots to fill, but we wish you the very, very best. And I'm going to open it to the other members of the Select Board to add their comments. This proclamation is in the Town Administrator's Office, signed by the three of us, and we couldn't be more wholeheartedly in support of what we've just said.
I was just talking with my wife about how many years it's been. So that was a cold read of the proclamation, just to be clear. I said it was about 20 years, so I was close. I remember when you came on board, I was on this FinCom at the time. And thrilled to have had you with us all these years. So thank you very much for what you've done.
Brenda, thank you. You'll definitely be missed. I'm sure that you're, like Pete said, your shoes are hard to fill. But thank you for all the things you've done. You've handled so many different issues and you've done it well professionally and with grace. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Brenda, would you like to say anything?
There you go, I figured you found the button. I just want to thank you all for your kind words and for your support. Your support, your predecessor's support. It's been a pleasure working for you and with you all these years. And I'm going to miss some things. I'll definitely miss some people and some things. There are some things that I'd like to forget, but probably won't be able to. But thank you all, I appreciate it.
Before we sign off, I'd like to ask our Town Administrator, Mr. Gazinski, if he has anything he'd like to add.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the Board summed it up well. Brenda's been a joy to work with. She has dealt with some very difficult situations in her years working in both Milis and Medway. And she's met them head on with courage and compassion at the same time. And on behalf of the administration and all the staff here, we'd like to thank her for all her work and wish her well and a well-deserved retirement. So thank you Brenda for all you've done.
Way to go Brenda, congratulations.
Thank you.
If anyone else has anything they want to add, please feel free to do so.
Mr. Chair, it's Kathy McInnes if I might. You and the Select Board understand totally what Brenda does with, and especially Mr. Gazinski, the court cases. There was quite a huge one when I was on the Board with Jim McCaffrey and Loring. And the way Brenda briefed the Board, as I'm sure she does, you and previous Boards, never had a question after Brenda made her statement. And I hope you've taught your predecessor, or your next one up Brenda, how to work everything, because I hope it happens. Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much Kathy.
Thank you Kathy.
Okay. With that, I'm going to move things on. And our next item on the agenda is another recognition. And it's really for scholastic and merit recognition at the high school. And we are tonight going to recognize those who are in attendance. And I understand there are some who could not make it due to basketball practice and other things. But that's to recognize the National Merit Scholars and the National Honor Society inductees and anyone else who's here from National Honor Society. There were two National Merit Scholars for the town of Milis who were recognized in a local paper, which unfortunately I've lost my copy and so I'm no longer able to find their names. But if the two of you are there, I'd appreciate it if you'd recognize yourselves and let us know who you are so we can put faces to the names. I also don't know if our school superintendent was able to make it this evening. Mr. Gazinski, do you know if he was?
He said he was going to attempt to, but I'm not sure if he's made it on the line. I don't know if there's any other school administration or any other folks that were able to join us tonight.
Well, that's.
Mr. Jermaine Gazinski, it's Mark O'Dick, the Principal at the high school.
Oh, wonderful.
Oh, great. All right, how you doing, everybody doing?
I'm so glad you were able to join us. It's always a privilege to recognize students for achievement, whether it's sports achievements of one kind or another, or academic achievements. And I thought this would be a great opportunity to recognize some academic achievements. If you have any comments, certainly would appreciate them.
Yeah, absolutely. And thank you very much for allowing our students to be here tonight to celebrate their accomplishments. I know, so the first thing I know that you wanted to recognize tonight, which is an incredible accomplishment, is we had two students who were named commended scholars by the National Merit. They were given honorable mention from National Merit as commended scholars through taking the PSAT exams last year. And those two students, it's an incredible accomplishment. There aren't a lot of students across the United States that are recognized in this manner. So the two students, and I don't know if they're both in it, I can see Jonah Staples on the screen. There's one, and Cole Blumenow was our other student. I don't know if Cole is with us tonight, but Jonah is on. So we want to recognize both of you for outstanding achievement in being recognized in the category of kids that are very, that have worked incredibly hard and had scores that put them in the upper echelon of kids around the United States that took that PSAT exam.
I will tell you, it's quite an accomplishment. I know we all probably took those exams. There aren't many of us who were able to be National Merit Scholars. Yeah, very few and far between, so quite an accomplishment. I see Christopher Staples is on here also. So do either of you have anything you'd like to say?
I was just doing the clapping icon, I think it looked like a raising a hand, I was just clapping. Thank you. Thank you for their acknowledgement, we appreciate it.
It's our pleasure to do so. Now I'll go back to the Principal and ask him, Mark, if you would tell us a little about the National Honor Society.
Yeah, so this class of kids are from the class of 2022, will be graduating this year. Typically, we would have recognized this group of students in the spring of last year. But due to the circumstances that we were in, we weren't able to do that. So we've started some other unique things and we were able to recognize them with an award ceremony this past December at the high school. So all of these kids scored, their overall grade point average had to be at 85 or higher in all of their classes. And in addition to that, they had to, they had to show leadership, community service, be good school citizens, and a variety of other things that are voted on by a faculty council to earn the honor of National Honor Society inductees. And Mr. Scott Alcanata, who's one of our science teachers, is the head of the National Honor Society at the high school. And we had a wonderful ceremony where the students were able to recognize someone who's made an impact in their lives in front of a nice audience of people in our auditorium. It was kind of nice to get back in there together again to celebrate student achievement. And we have a number of students that are on the call tonight. And not surprisingly, a number that couldn't make it, because some of these kids are some of the most involved that we have in our school. So some are playing athletics, they're working jobs, they're a little bit, they're all over the place. So it's nice that we're able to have a good group of students be able to join us tonight. And I don't know if you, how you want to recognize them, or if you want to have them just say their names quickly, it's up to you all. But I can see a bunch of them on the call with us.
Why don't you help them and say their names and maybe we can see who they are, to say their names, okay?
Yeah, sure, I'm kind of looking down the screen here to see who we have with us tonight. So I can see Ben Padulka. And if you guys are on there, you can maybe jump on, jump off, jump on camera there. If Ben's ready for the Bruins game tonight with his shirt on. We've got Ben Padulka, Caroline Monday, I see, is on tonight. I think Colin Streck is with us as well. Let's see, Jaden Adams, I believe is on with us tonight here too. Jonah, who we just recognized as a commended student, so Jonah Staples as well. Riley Conroy is on here with us tonight too, if you want to give a wave. Let's see, who else am I missing? Anybody that I'm missing, oh, Ryan Mullin, sorry Ryan, I didn't mean to leave you out there. Ryan Mullin's up on the screen there too. And I think that's all of the group that's with us.
Carolyn Monday or Jaden Adams, I probably mentioned them.
Yeah, yeah, I mentioned them, they're both on here. And for those of you that are on, can you, can you tell me how many students this year you remember that we had inducted? If somebody wants to jump in quick and give us that number? Not everybody at once. I want to say we had somewhere, somewhere, I think it was in the 30s, there's Colin, 33, that's what I thought. So 33 was the number of kids that we had inducted out of this year's class.
Wow, that's quite an achievement. I came from a somewhat larger high school, but when we did it, all the classes combined didn't exceed more than 25 to 30. So this is quite a class you've got there. And you ought to be quite thrilled, I know the community is. It's just great to recognize these kids. I'm going to ask both Aaron and Craig if they have any comments about these future leaders. Aaron?
I just wanted to say congratulations. It's a lot of hard work. And I really hope you guys have a lot of success in your futures. But thank you for coming to our meeting tonight and letting us honor you for all of your hard work.
I echo what Aaron said, and I'll keep it brief.
I think it's great and we really do appreciate it, but we hope to be honoring others, as I said, whether it's sports or other special areas. We hope you'll keep us advised, Mark, so that we can give justice to people who really put out, not just academically, but for the community as a whole and so forth. It's important to the community to know that. So congratulations to all of you and thank you for those who were able to attend. And good luck to everyone. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. The next item on our agenda is the DPW project update. And some recognition going there to an individual by the name of Dave Romachi. So I am at this point going to first ask that our Town Administrator, if he has any comments, will make them and then hand off to Mr. Wayne Clacco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make this brief because I know there's some people that want to speak to this. But oftentimes, the staff at our DPW are unsung heroes. They do many tasks every day, many of which may go unnoticed by the public at times. So I think it's important to recognize the great work that they do as a department and all the workers there. And I think it's important that we recognize some outstanding achievement within the DPW and assisting us with a recent building project. And you know, we're very happy that the project's coming to a good conclusion. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back to you because I know that the Chair of the Permanent Building Committee and some other folks want to talk. So again, I just want to thank Dave for all his hard work in helping the town through this and getting a great project and saving the taxpayers a lot of money in the process.
Thank you. Before I turn it over to Wayne, I was just, I'm pleased to see that you're awake, Mr. Clacco. I know that the last couple of weeks have been very tough. You've had an arduous series of endeavors to deal with out there in Hawaii.
Had to get up quite early this morning, Hawaii time, in order to get acclimated, but glad to be back. And Mr. Jermaine, thanks for putting us on the agenda tonight. I want to talk about the DPW project. And if it's possible to let me share my screen, perhaps for the voters who are watching tonight, I'd like to just maybe two photos of the buildings, if that's, if that's possible.
I don't have that ability, but I think Maureen does, if, there you go.
All right, so just briefly, as Mr. Gazinski said, we are nearing the completion of the project. What you have in front of you is the staff building. That is the replacement of the offices that were located inside the original building, which have been demolished, they were inadequately constructed years ago when they were built, created ventilation mold problems, roof leakage problems. And so we've corrected all of that by essentially demolishing them and constructing this modern, state-of-the-art building, which is offices, lockers, wash facilities, and is what's necessary for the staff there to work. The second photo is the vehicle service building. And I would just briefly explain to you that the overhead door that you see closest to you in the picture is a service bay where we will.
Wayne, I think we might be seeing the same staff building picture again, I don't know if anybody else has advanced.
Oh, I've got.
Would you like me to talk you through this? Because I do this for a living now.
Okay, I have this vehicle building on my screen, but.
I think you might be, go to share and share again, yeah. Share, share a different screen.
You see.
Or did Maureen pick it for you?
Yeah, let Maureen pick it for you.
She can't.
No, I can't.
Okay.
I think that it's.
See if you can share it one more time.
When you select share, you might be able to pick it.
I think if you just close it Wayne and then like almost start over.
Yeah, I'll close it and open it again with the new photo.
Yeah. Can't, you gotta close out of that, I think.
Do you have it now?
Yes.
You have it.
Yes. Okay. My apologies. So we have, looking at two overhead doors, the one closest to you is the service bay, which will essentially allow us to perform those functions that were, are currently being performed in the, in the existing building in a much more modern and efficient facility. The furthest away bay is the wash bay, which will allow us to wash all of our vehicles and get the salts off of them. State regulations require that that be done inside. We're certainly required, we were required to do that. And so we're capturing all of the water instead of running off into the, into the wetlands center behind you there, that you can see in the photo. We now are able to do that in a compliant way. So those are the two buildings. We've done this at a far less cost than our neighbors in Medway and Medfield have. I believe this is, will serve the needs of the DPW for the, for the long term. And so that's what the project is about. I would, if you will, allow me to read the letter that the Permanent Building Committee sent to Jim McKay. I'm not sure if you're prepared for me to do that or not, but. Let me do that. On December 22nd, I sent the letter to Jim McKay. It's a letter of commendation for Dave Romachi. Jim, with the DPW project nearing completion, the Permanent Building Committee decided at its meeting last night to recognize Dave Romachi's contribution to the success of the project. In addition to his regular duties, he served as the owner's project manager, a requirement for state construction contracts over a million dollars. Milis has never performed this function in-house, instead relying on professional project management firms to oversee the construction of our public projects over the last 20 years. Those include the library, police and fire stations, and the Clyde Brown School. With some reservation, we agreed to take on this function internally for this $4.6 million project based on Dave's qualifications and expertise. In hindsight, we could not be happier with our decision. Dave has been a daily presence on site, working with the contractor, J.J. Cardozzi, its subcontractors, and the design team to solve problems and deal with unforeseen conditions. He kept the project moving and whenever the possibility arose, he looked for ways to avoid needlessly spending money. In fact, quite a few change orders were avoided entirely or substantially reduced by working with the contractor to find the best solution for all parties. by working with the contractor to find the best solution for all parties. Also, a substantial portion of the site and demolition work is being self-performed by the DPW, saving substantial cost to taxpayers because of the capabilities, of his capabilities and that of the DPW staff. This project will be completed on time and under budget due to the combined efforts of our team. J.J. Cardozy has been an excellent contractor with which to work, as has Robert Taylor of Taylor &amp; Burns Architects. The daily presence of Dave Romachi, however, cannot be overstated. He's been an integral part of the success of the project and his efforts should not be taken for granted. Dave is an asset to the town and the Permanent Building Committee is taking this opportunity to recognize his contributions. Sincerely, Wayne Clacco, Chairman.
Thank you so much.
I gotta say something myself. I have had the privilege of working with Dave. And I know Dave has looked at me sometimes askant because there are questions about my familiarity with certain things. But I will tell you, it's a pleasure to work with you, Dave. Easy to work with, you gave me good guidance, you helped me get the job done that I agreed to do on the wiring for Ethernet and so forth. And again, thank you very much for all that you do for the town.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over to either Aaron or Craig or whatever.
Thank you very much for all of your contributions. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, I was lucky enough to serve on the Permanent Building Committee when this project started and I just attend the meetings because I guess I'm a groupie, I don't know. But Dave was great to have on there running this project. It made a huge difference. Worked on the other projects where we outsourced this and this was every bit as good, if not better, than all of those projects. So thank you very much for doing this. It's a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
Aren't there any other individuals who'd like to make any comments?
Mr. Chair, never ask because you'll never know. Kathy McGinn is here. But I want to compliment, first of all, the Chair of the Permanent Building Committee. What an excellent letter you wrote, Wayne. I could, no one, no one could have said anything better than what the DPW and especially Dave has done. And I'm speaking for the water and sewer users, which, as you know, paid a little bit more for this project than just the non-users because in fact, that's, the vehicles are stored there. And the Permanent Building Committee did a great job on the building. These pictures are perfect and thanks so much for the money that you saved on behalf of the enterprise people. Thanks a lot, Main.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, Wayne, you know, that pretty much summarizes what a lot of us. Because you have been involved with so many of these projects and you've done such an excellent job each time. It's notable, the work you've done. I'm going to turn off my mic because I think there's another mic around exactly.
Yeah, there is. It's me. Dave, all I can say is it was wonderful having you to ask questions, take care of everything. I can't thank you enough.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the same, I think Wayne, you know, outlined all of our thoughts as Millis residents and the gratitude that we have for the work that was done and overseeing it. We knew from the beginning, when we first started discussing this process of Dave overseeing the project, we knew that it was going to work and it was very successful. You know, and I know after talking about the letter with Dave afterwards, and I'm sure he's gonna, when he speaks, he has a great crew that works with him. And not only did they assist with, you know, all this work that was being done, we also ran a business of the, you know, the general work of the DPW on a daily basis. And nothing was slighted during that time. If there was a water main break, it was fixed. And if he had to come back in that night and grade the areas that you're looking at, that's how it was done. All the ballads had to be put in, whether it was, you know, 10 degrees out, that's when it was done and that's when he got it done on time and on project. Very proud of the workforce that we have and it was, we're not done yet. There's still a little bit more to go and moving on to another one. But for right now, Dave and his crew, you know, they work, they work, the crew worked for Dave and he knows that and I know he appreciates, you know, the long hours that the other guys also put into this project too.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
No, I also want to echo, you know, I work in construction and, you know, that project went smoothly. And I would say a good part of it was, you know, due to Dave being there to help grease the wheels and work out issues. You know, issues arose and we figured out solutions and we got it done. And, you know, great job.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to make a comment? Well, other than some name recognition issues, Dave, I can't say enough about how much we appreciate the work you and your crew have done throughout this project. That's not to take anything away from Wayne or Jim, but the point is you did a superb job and thank you very much.
Thank you. And as Jim's, yes, as Jim was saying, it was the entire crew that helped me through this. Like I said, the people I have, I can trust. I don't have to babysit them, you know. It's, it's great to have people you can send out and do a job and trust them. And as Wayne was saying, this, everybody on this project worked together, even every little intricate contractor, everything just worked out very smoothly. And thank you so much for all the kind words, everybody. I really, it's to the heart. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Well, on that note, we're going to move on to our next item on the agenda. And for that, I'm going to ask Mr. Kozinski to talk about the appointment of Council on Aging Dispatcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board is aware, we recently had a vacancy in the Council on Aging Dispatch Receptionist position. We did put an advertisement out and we did get several applications. The Senior Director and I did meet with one of the finalists and her name is Rochelle Bunt. And she, her, I believe her application for employment is in your packet. I believe she is equipped with all the necessary skills to excel in this position. And I would like to request that the board vote to ratify my appointment of Rochelle Bunt to be the Dispatch Receptionist for the Council on Aging, with the one caveat that it would be contingent on a successful physical. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has in regards to this appointment.
Has she gone through her quarry?
She has successfully completed her quarry, yes.
Okay. I'll open it to the board.
No questions. I'll make a motion that we ratify the appointment of the Town Administrator of Rochelle Bunt as a dispatcher for the Council on Aging, subject to required physical or other paperwork requirements.
Okay.
So move and second it to ratify the appointment of Rochelle Bunt for Dispatch Receptionist position at the Council on Aging. I'll poll the board. Aaron Underhill?
Yes.
Craig Schultz?
Yes.
Pete Jermaine, yes. And so done. Okay, Mr. Kozinski?
Thank you very much.
Is Bunt here?
She is not. I could certainly bring her in at subsequent meeting if you'd like to meet with her, but, or I'd recommend if you have a chance to come in and meet with her here. She'll be hopefully starting work within the next seven to 10 days.
We'll look forward to meeting with her at the Town Hall sometime in the near future. How's that?
Excellent.
Okay. Next, we have appointment of Building Department Assistant. And again, Mr. Kozinski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually do have the Building Commissioner here with me, but as the board, I'm sure remembers, not too long ago, the board appointed the former Building Department Assistant, Elizabeth Strand, to the position in the Assessor's Office, and that created this vacancy. And we're fortunate enough to have Jennifer Kiggin, who held the position prior and who is currently working in the Board of Health office. She has applied to go back to the Building Department. And with that, I would like to ask the board to ratify my appointment of Jennifer Kiggin as the Building Department Assistant in the Building Department. Would you like to add anything, Mike? And so the Building Commissioner is here. He has nothing to add, but if you have any questions for him. And Ms. Kiggin worked in the Building Office for a number of years prior and so she knows all the ins and outs of the office and Ms. Kiggin is on the line if you have any questions for her. She is certainly a familiar face to all here, I believe.
We're happy to have her.
All of us know her. The only question I have is, is she going to be able to get out of the Board of Health in one piece as a healthy individual?
John's not thrilled, but he knows that Jennifer's going to work with him on the transition and we'll make sure John, John is doing okay and gets through with the transition.
Well, I have worked with Jennifer on a number of things and I got to tell you, she's quite an asset to the town. So Mike, you've got quite a person coming in to replace what was a superb individual. You've got one good person after another coming into that department. I feel for, I feel for John right now, but are there any?
Get away, don't worry.
Comments from the board, please? And I'll take a motion.
I move that we ratify the Town Administrator's appointment of Jennifer Kiggin as the Building Department Assistant as soon as possible.
Second. So move and second it to appoint, to ratify the appointment of Jennifer Kiggin as Building Department Assistant, and I'll poll the board on that. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes. Ms. Kiggin, do you have anything you'd like to say now that you've been appointed to the Building Department?
I just wanted to say thank you. I did love working for John and I like working for Mike, so I'm excited to go back down to building and I'll definitely be helping John out until he gets a new assistant. So it'll work out good. It will all work out good in the end.
I'm sure it will. You're very well appreciated throughout the town.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Okay. Well, okay, we're on to another appointment. And this is Appointment of Capital Planning Committee Member. And I believe that is going to be somebody by the name of Mark Conroy. And I don't know if Robin Briggs is here, who might want to make any comments?
I don't believe so, Mr. Chairman. I can relay that the former school representative on the Capital Committee, Carrie Roach, had indicated, you know, for personal reasons, she wasn't able to continue in that role for, just for the time requirement, but that Mark Conroy has stepped forward. And we did receive an email from Robin Briggs notifying us that Mr. Conroy has volunteered to represent the school committee on the Capital Committee for the remainder of this fiscal year. So I, and I leave some emails in your packet to that, to that effect. So I believe that the Capital Committee is requesting that that appointment be made to bring the Capital Committee up to its prior membership level.
Well, I will say, obviously, I know Mark for a number, know Mark for a number of years and he has a superb background for participating in that committee and being very productive, so I think that's a great asset. Is Mark with us tonight?
I don't believe so. We didn't specifically reach out to him. This is a pretty standard appointment, I believe, when the school committee is making a replacement or putting forward a name for a replacement. And as I mentioned, the Capital Planning Committee is gearing up for this fiscal year's budget season and would like to get, again, their, their membership back up to full level.
Sure. Comments from the board? Now I'll take a nomination.
I move that, go ahead.
I move that we appoint Mark Conroy to the Capital Planning Committee effective immediately.
Okay.
To move and second it to appoint Mark Conroy to the Capital Planning Committee effective immediately. I'll poll the board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes. So done. We now have a Cultural Council member appointment. Give me a second to pull that up. And again, I'm going to ask if, Mr. Kozinski, you have any further information you'd like to add?
No, Mr. Chairman. Other than that, the Millis Cultural Council is requesting that the board appoint Edward Jin to a position on the Cultural Council. Edward's Volunteer Talent Form is in your packet, outlining his background as a retired attorney, retired Needham Town Meeting Member, and among other memberships. So again, the Cultural Council is requesting his appointment to their, to their board.
I read through it. Looks very good. Any comments from the members of the board? Given, done?
I move that we appoint Edward Jin to the Cultural Council.
Second.
So move and second it to appoint Edward Jin to the Millis Cultural Council. I'll poll the board. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes. And that appointment is now effective. Okay. The next item on the agenda is to review and referral of proposed zoning bylaw amendments for an associate member to the planning board. And for that, I'm going to ask first Mr. Kozinski and then Mr. Nichols to go over that appointment for us and the rewording that's being requested.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet is a memo from Richard Nichols, the Chair of the Planning Board, outlining two proposed zoning bylaw amendments, one regarding an associate member to the planning board and the other regarding amendments tables two and three, and to add an IP2 district. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to turn it over to Chairman Nichols as he is more of an expert in this area than I am. So I will, I will turn it over to him, talk a little bit about it and so the board can discuss this. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everybody. The first zoning bylaw amendment would be to add to our group and make the associate member able to vote on more items. With all the things that are going on, we've had where we've been short on members. If we could add, to allow the associate member to vote on certain items, which they're legally allowed to, it would make it so we would be less likely to have to delay somebody coming in to have something reviewed by the board. And so they would be able to act, they would be able to act on special permits and site plans, which right now they're only allowed to redo special permits. So it's a small change, basically a clerical thing that would allow us to have a little more horsepower to help keep things moving forwards. So that would be the first one. The second one was basically a clerical issue. And on, we have an IP1 and an IP2 zone and. And basically, when in 2000, I'd like to say 2014, when it was passed, the language did not get through to make the IP1 and IP2 district the same. Just got left off. So, we basically, Mike Gepetro pointed that out. We reviewed it at the Planning Board. We decided that they are both the same type of zones, and they should have the same requirements. So, it's basically fixing a clerical error.
Let me ask a question. Mr. Kozinski, these are articles. Can we, as a Board, vote them? Or are we recommending that they go to the town for a voting?
I believe that you're recommending or you're agreeing to put them on the warrant for the Spring Annual Town Meeting.
That's kind of what I thought. Well, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. You actually send them back to us. We have an open meeting, and we review them. And then, after the open meeting, then we send them back to you guys.
Okay. But ultimately, if it's agreed, that we want, we concur in this, then they'll end up as on the town warrant, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. That's really what I was most concerned with. So, what we're voting on tonight is that we agree that they should be going back to you, but we concur with what you're recommending here.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Are there any comments from the Board members?
I just have two quick questions, actually.
Go ahead.
First one, do we need, are we just saying, yeah, it sounds good? Or do we have to vote or anything tonight?
Yeah, if you could, if you could, if you're just to make it formal, if you vote to send it back to us to have an open hearing, then that's what we're looking for.
Okay. And then the second question is, will there, I know we're, you know, Chair Jermaine was just talking about having it on the warrant. There'll be enough time for all these other meetings to get it on the warrant?
Yes.
Yes, okay, great, thank you.
That's why we did it early, to make sure that we didn't have a panic.
Sounds good.
I'll make a motion that we send these two articles back to the Planning Board for them to conduct an open meeting with our endorsement.
Second.
To move and seconded to send both articles back to the Planning Board with our endorsement. I'll poll the Board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Okay. So, you have the approval of the Board with endorsement to work on it from your end and go through the open meeting process.
Great, good. Thank you very much. Appreciate the help.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. The next item is to review approval letter of intent for Hazard Mitigation Plan Grant. And this is by Mr. Weiss. And once again, I'm going to ask that Mr. Kozinski apprise the Board of exactly what's going on here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet is a memo from Mr. Weiss dealing with a Milis Hazardous Mitigation Plan Update for 2023. As you know, we did approve such a plan a number of years ago. We are required, in order to have this stay active, to update the plan on a regular basis. And Mr. Weiss is here tonight to discuss that and go over the next steps with the Board. And then he can take it from there.
Okay. Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm actually disguised tonight as our Finance Director. But I think my colleague, DPW Director McKay, might also still be here, but I don't see him. But what we're asking tonight is for the Board to approve and authorize the town's Energy Manager and the DPW Director to proceed with updating the town's hazardous mitigation plan and also to seek a grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency. The plan analyzes the town's vulnerability to climate catastrophes and events, especially as climate change rapidly changes our environment. So, things such as flooding and drought, fires that are due to environmental events we can plan for. It'll also help us as we request funding for action grants from the Municipal Vulnerability Program, which we are a designated member. The plan was created, as the Town Administrator said, was created in 2018. We, at that time, had financial assistance from a federal grant from FEMA. And we anticipate that the cost of this update will be around $20,000. And that FEMA, the FEMA grant we're applying for will cover about 75% of that, so $15,000, with the remainder, about $5,000 cost to come from the town in combination of in-kind contributions and perhaps some cash contributions. So, I guess what we're asking tonight is just for the Board to agree that we should proceed with updating our hazardous mitigation plan and to seek the available funding through state and federal emergency management agencies.
Okay. Well, there's a fair amount in that packet, but the basics are that we pretty much have to move forward on this mitigation plan. And as I read it, we really don't have much of an alternative. So, I'm going to open it to the Board for any questions they may have. Hearing none, I will ask if there are any in the community who are listening who have questions. Hearing none, I will take a motion from the Board.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the Energy Planning, I'm looking at my notes, the Energy Planning Director and the DPW Director to update the hazardous mitigation plan and pursue a grant to do that.
Second.
To move and seconded to authorize the Energy Management Director and DPW Director to update the hazardous mitigation plan and work within the state guidelines as necessary. I'll poll the Board. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes. So, you do have the Board's authorization for proceeding on this, Mr. Weiss.
Right. Thank you all very much.
Okay. Next, we're going to open session Agenda Items. And the first is Approval of a Contract for a New Filing System at the Building Department. And I'm going to ask Mr. Kozinski to update us on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The contract in your packet, meeting packet this evening is the culmination of about three years of proposals and planning by the Building Commissioner. The Building Commissioner has a large variety of important building files and plans that he is required by law to maintain, many of which permanently. And we are experiencing some space issues in the building and trying to maintain all these files. And one of the solutions that is available to us is to establish a modern mechanized filing system for that office, that filing system, the funding for which was approved at the Fall Annual Town Meeting. The company WB Mason has the state contract for this system. Therefore, no further procurement process is necessary. The state's already done that for us. And it's coming before you this evening because the amount is in excess of $10,000. The total cost for the filing system for the Building Department is $17,975.20. And I'm requesting that the Board approve the contract to move forward with the purchase and installation of that system.
Okay.
Answer any questions that you have.
I'll open it to questions from the Board. I've had an opportunity to discuss this with the Town Administrator, so I'll let the two of you have an opportunity to talk with him.
My thought is, if it was voted, the funds were appropriated, and the two experts that are going to actually do the filing have selected it. I have no idea what I could add in the conversation.
So, I'll make a motion. I move that we approve the contract with WB Mason for the filing system for the Building Department in the amount of $17,975.20.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the contract for the filing system with WB Mason in the amount of $17,975.20. I have only one quick question, Mr. Kozinski. Notice in here, it says, "No stair carry." Are we going to be placing this in a location where they do not have to ascend or descend any stairs?
We're going to work out the details of that. I had some discussion with the Building Commissioner about that, but that is not an insurmountable issue. So, we will manage to handle that. But it's a good question.
Thank you very much. I'll poll the Board. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes. Well, the filing system, which is previously been approved at a town meeting, then we go for it. So, I think we're in good shape.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is to establish a meeting date so that we, the Select Board, can go over the sewer, opposed sewer bylaw and proposed moratorium for the sewers and discuss it in detail amongst ourselves. It will be an open meeting, but it will be a working session for the Select Board. I believe that we had looked at, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Kozinski, February 7th was the date we were looking at. I don't know how that stands right now because I don't remember the details with the other two.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I believe that was the date originally discussed. And the Board was going to discuss that tonight to see if that was still workable for everyone for a meeting on the evening of February 7th.
Is that still acceptable to you, Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mr. Schultz?
Second, no. Yeah, no problem.
Great. What time do you want to meet?
I can do whenever. It's up to, I think Craig's got the worst schedule.
Seven o'clock is doable. 6:30 meetings are very tough.
No, that's fine. Seven o'clock is fine. I just, if you needed a little more time, I was just going to say.
Seven o'clock can easily be achieved. I skipped dinner at the Economic Development Committee meeting, and that was a mistake for everybody. Because I started at 3:30. You'll get a civilized, well-fed, not cranky Craig, okay?
Well, that sounds absolutely superb. We'll plan on having sewer discussions and everything else at that time. Thank you.
Also, I'm sending a list to Mike of questions I'd like to make sure we can get answers to for that meeting. So, if there's anything that the lawyers, because God knows there's lawyers, can answer so that we don't have to speculate. Just, I'll throw it out there. The two questions keep popping in my mind. Will the moratorium block new projects requiring sewer hookups, even 40Bs? Or is there a way to circumvent that by the developer? And does this put us in a better place for preventing development and sites that already have a sewer hookup? Will they be able to continue with the project? But there's no need to discuss or discuss these now, but I just wanted to let you, make you aware because we're now allowed to talk privately. But those are three of the questions that are at the top of my mind on this. And I'll send them off to Mike. But I'd suggest that anything we can get Jay to weigh in on. Because I'd like to leave that meeting having taken a vote on both of those issues.
That's, that is absolutely the intent of this meeting, I'm afraid. Please, both of you, I've already sent some thoughts into Mike and discussed some with Jay. But please, get your concerns, issues, whatever you want, to Mike so that we can get them to Jay. I believe Mike, Jay will be joining us that evening?
That's correct. I've spoken with him, and he has cleared his schedule and penned us in for the evening of the 7th to discuss these issues.
Excellent. So, yeah, please, get them in. And this is our time. We're going to finalize it that night. One way or another, it's going to get our stamp on it. Fair enough?
Nice.
That's good. Next item on the agenda. Approval of the Milis Beautification Day Event. Mr. Kozinski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet is a memorandum from Jen Donahue of the Lions, the co-chair of the Milis Beautification Day, and Janet Gashler of the Milis Garden Club, for approval, for the Board's approval for the Milis Beautification Day scheduled for April 30th from 9:00 AM to noon. They're requesting that the Lions Club and the Garden Club hold the event on that day using community volunteers to pick up litter and trash at a number of designated town sites and along town roadways. The DPW will be asked to place traffic cones at one or two roadway sites, as well as pick up the filled trash bags at the sites. So, this will be similar to events in the past. The representatives from the clubs will be available in front of the Town Hall to provide information regarding roadside safety and avoidance of poison ivy and ticks, et cetera. And we'll have extra tools available. They will make sure that the volunteers have signed waivers and are given necessary safety tips before the volunteer work begins that morning. So, they're asking for the Board's approval and probably be working to advertise this more broadly over the next couple of months.
Will there be a rain day next Sunday?
I don't see a rain day listed. Whether or not they're going to announce one as we get closer, I don't know. But they usually do it rain or shine, unless it's, you know, absolutely horrible weather. I think they've worked in the past in light rain. So, they'll, something that we can follow back up with them if they would have a, they may have to come back to the Board if they get rained out. But again, they work on most weather conditions. They've done the volunteer work.
That's great. I just thought I'd ask. The Board, do either of you have any comments or questions?
I actually love the event. We do it every year. And there's sadly a lot of trash all the time to pick up. So, I move that we approve Milis Beautification Day for April 30th from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM.
Second.
To move and seconded to approve Milis Beautification Day on April 30th from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, noon. All in favor? I'll poll the Board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes. So, you can inform them that we do concur.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I do have one other item, Mr. Chairman, that we discussed this afternoon in regards to an item that came up unexpectedly as a time urgent issue. And that has to do with the contracts for the new fire engine and for the new ambulance. I did speak with the chief earlier today. We thought we had a little more time in order to address these contracts. However, it's my understanding, through speaking with the chief, that the two companies that we are going through, who have secured, who we have secured these through a procurement process through the state, the state contracts are renewing, but the current pricing expires on January 31st for the fire engine and for the ambulance. So, we'd like to get the Board's approval and authorization to authorize me to sign the contracts later this week. The contracts were in your packet. I can tell you the amounts of the pricing for the two pieces of equipment through the state procurement process. For the fire engine, it's $648,000. And for the ambulance, it's $339,561. So, again, you have the language of the contracts I sent out to you earlier this afternoon. Uh, I sent out to you, uh, earlier this afternoon. And I'd be asking that the board authorize me to sign the contracts uh, once, um, town council has approved them as deformed. Um, and, uh, so that we can move ahead and save the ten percent, uh, additional costs on these, on these, uh, uh, two fire apparatus.
Yes. If I can make a comment, part of the reason we're doing this right now is the new contract, when it renews with the state, will cost ten percent more for both of these items. To save the ten percent, we're asking that Mike be authorized to sign the contracts. We will then discuss the contracts in detail at our next select board meeting. Um, the object is not in any way to obfuscate the issue of what's going on here. Everything will be discussed in detail. But we do not want to end up having to pay ten percent more just because things got deferred by an extra week or so. So it's from that perspective that we're trying to move forward right away into, uh, giving him the authorization to at least commit to these.
Right. And I will be asking the board at your next meeting to, again, to, uh, ratify, um, fully ratify the contracts.
Right.
So, yeah, I, I'm fine with, with that. I mean, also, it's one of, it's like the filing cabinets. If the fire chief and the town administrator have determined that these are the right vehicles and the money was appropriated, um, I'm not going to be able to tell them that we don't need that fire truck. We want a different one. So, and I trust the, the, the contract wording being reviewed by the lawyer and the prices are in the state contract. So I think that it's pretty perfunctory, um, at this point, uh, approval. But obviously, we'll do the formal ratification when it's all finished.
Yes, absolutely. That will be at the next meeting. So, Ms. Underhill, anything? Okay. Now, I'll take a, I'll ask the board for a vote on this.
Um, I move that we authorize the town administrator to sign the contracts for the fire engine for six hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars and the ambulance for three hundred and thirty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Second.
To move and second it to allow the town administrator to sign the contracts for both the fire engine and the ambulance as stated earlier. Uh, poll the board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Okay. You do have the approval to sign. And I reiterate, we will be discussing this in detail at our next meeting. Is that adequate for you, Mr. Gazinski?
Yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. On that note, I think that ends the basic town meeting, the basic town meeting, the basic board meeting as, uh, for tonight. We're going to end the open session. We will be going into executive session. We will be discussing, um, pending police and, uh, police contracts for the local police and the police dispatchers. So that's what our executive session will be focused on this evening. And so I thank you all very much for tonight. I'm going to ask the board to move into session. I don't think we have to vote on that, do we?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, yes, the board needs to take a roll call vote to go into executive session and to then come back into open session solely for the purpose of adjournment following the end of the executive session.
Then I'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Jermaine, yes. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to now enter executive session. Thank you all very much. And I'll see the, I'll rest of you at executive session momentarily. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.